You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the August 12th, 2024 meeting of the Long Beach Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.xslaportecounty.org.
Okay.
Recording in progress.
Welcome everyone to the Town Council meeting, August 2024. Let's please stand for the pledge. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, which stands one nation, united in the soul, with liberty and justice for all. May could you do roll call?
Council President George Schmidt.
Here.
Box members Kendra Bartlett.
Here.
J.D. Basley.
Here.
Eder Ramsey.
Here.
Shannon Wolden.
Present.
Governor Treasurer Mike Collins. I'm here. Town Administrator Chief of Police Mark Swistek.
Present.
Attorney General Chris Molyneux.
Present.
That concludes roll.
Thank you. The only opening remarks I have is going to add one item to the agenda. A letter to the U.S. Coast Guard from the Town Council under new business. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the council meeting from July 8, 2024?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we have any public comments?
Yes. Hi, Dr. Mitch Stiglott, 2020, Golden Gate Drive, Long Beach, Indiana, 46360. My mother was homecoming queen. I'm a semester of SEAL alumni, Wollamere High School alumni. I'm still being maliciously prosecuted. We live in one of the biggest houses in Long Beach, about a block from Lake Michigan. We have a tennis court in the backyard. We have acre of property. The complainant, we have exhausted their ability to prove that the complaint made for all of the allegations. They have yet to drop the allegations, compare me to any of the celebrities, most famous, successful celebrities from Indiana of all time. I'm better looking, I date better women, better looking women. I'm the very last person that should be being maliciously prosecuted in the state of Indiana. I filed a number of complaints against Rena Sterling Freeman, the supposedly elected judge supervising the magistrate appointed to the case and to the governor. I've got a copy of that through today. I filed a complaint against the ACLU requesting, insisting that they make a defense either by press statement or public letter. I'm asking the Town Council do the same thing, object publicly to the malicious prosecution either by press statement or public letter. It would be fantastic. You have the police reports, I've sent them to you. I made support from the Town Council. Your objection is blatant malicious prosecution. I filed a complaint against SAG-AFTRA, the Screen Actors Guild, American Federation of Televisions and Radio Artists. I've been a union member since 2011. There's 160,000 very, very valuable members to society. I think we may need a new police chief if he had anything to do with it, if he doesn't want to charge the officer with false police work at the very least. This is treason, conspiracy, kidnapping. You know what they say, charge one officer for kidnapping, prevent 10,000 kidnappings. So the officer definitely should be charged. He's also been arrested for fraud and several felonies. I've got a document here that proves that the federal courts will show the government that it may be completely insane. I filed documents in one court in the Northern District of Indiana. They filed it in Arizona in another court. It's on public record, it's right here. It's on paper. I've got a copy of it for you here today. Have you seen Prometheus movie, 2012? It's about alien parasites trying to kill and backwards human beings assaulting the most reasonable, respectable, sane human being. That may intend they kill all living planters. So anyways, you may want to see that movie and what kind of behavior you may associate with that backwards human parasitic behavior to the human species. That may be what we're dealing with. I've also got a complaint against Michael Bloomberg, presidential candidate that I worked with on set of New Year's Eve. Movie, it arguably is possible, choose conspiracy.
Three minutes. Three minutes is our time.
At her work on set of New Year's Eve, Ryan Seacrest, Justin Fields, some big stories on that. Here are our comments and complaints. Have heard that.
Thank you, Matt.
Right.
All right, any more public comments in the audience? Any? Any public comments on Zoom?
Ten on Zoom.
Seeing not much, move to committee reports. Police Department Commission Chief Swistek.
Good evening. The Long Beach Police Department responded to 471 calls for service in the month of July when compared to 328 calls for service in previous year for an increase of 143 calls for service. During the month of July, 13 incident reports were documented. A total of five individuals were arrested, one misdemeanor arrest for operating a vehicle intoxicated, four misdemeanor arrests for driving with a driver's license. I would like to note on the calls for service, I just want to give a brief explanation. At least two council members have reached out to me and had asked about the calls for service. When you review the calls for service log, and I'll pass this down, this is page one of the narrative that we recently received, the grid that I pulled the calls for service in actually has an area within the jurisdiction of the Michigan City Police Department, and that's how the 911 center pulls together all the data. So when that data is compiled, I have no way than to pull that specific grid. On this form, I will see six different calls that are highlighted. What I ask is that when you review the calls for service monthly, when you look under the primary officer assignment, if you do not recognize any Long Beach police officer listed there, then that means that we didn't respond. For instance, the very top one on July 31st was a traffic stop that was performed at Triangle and Carver Road, so very close proximity to the town of Long Beach. And the traffic stop was initiated by Officer Scott Paul of the Michigan City Police Department. So I just want to give a little bit of narrative so that you have an understanding of how these calls are pulled together and not necessarily every call in the city of Michigan City are either being sent to or responding to. We do respond to calls that they send us to, or our officers will sometimes back up, Michigan City officers in close proximity to the town. It's just the nature of this profession that, you know, we back each other up because even on the most, you know, simple welfare check, Paul could turn into something, you know, very critical. So I just want to give everyone a little bit of explanation on that. In the month, there were two incidents I'd like to touch upon. On July 8th, Deputy Matthew Disbro, Assistant Trail Creek Police Department. That morning, he was heading home after his shift here at the town of Long Beach. We monitored all the other LaPorte County law enforcement agencies, EMS and fire frequencies, and he heard a call on 100 block Sterling Drive of an individual that was experiencing an overdose, a 46-year-old male. Deputy Disbro was the first to arrive on scene because he was nearby to his residence on his way home. In our vehicles, we carry Narcan and also carry ADDs, defred lasers, in all our vehicles. So he went into the home with all his medical ice skating equipment. He administered one dose of Narcan to the individual and began getting rescue breath using the bag CPR mask that was with him. LaPorte County EMS arrived on scene, transported the individual to Franciscan Hospital for the treatment. As a result of his actions on that morning while off duty, Deputy Disbro received a letter of commendation for his efforts. That gentleman survived after treatment at the hospital. Kind of similar to fortune that ended his life was on July 30th. July 30th, Corporal Matthew Farby was meeting flanking tires after an oil change that morning. He was at the intersection of Pine Street and Sixth Street, at which time he was also monitoring radio and heard a call from the city of Michigan City at the intersection of 600 block Spring Street. Corporal Farley was first to arrive. He was actually a block away from this home. Corporal Farley got there, actually talked to him about this incident. He met one of the homeowners out front. He jumped over a fence, ran into the home with his medical bag, administered one dose of Narcan to an individual that was experiencing an overdose at the time. And unfortunately, that encounter did not turn out the same as the Trail Creek one. The individual unfortunately had died as a result of the overdose. I'd like to commend Corporal Farley, taking the initiative, like I said, he just completed an oil change. But again, as you know, he's fired EMS, Republic servants were trying to do our best to save individuals, and unfortunately, in this case here, who's unable to rescue the individual at the time. So both of them also should be commended for their actions. As far as the police commission, we did meet on August 1st. We had a quarter of the meeting. We discussed the new public safety facility, gave an update on that, which we'll cover on the agenda tonight. We talked about our two deputies that we hired in the first quarter of this year, that being Deputy Matthew Disbro and Deputy Matthew O'Patt. Both are doing an exceptional job for us. They're very professional. We receive compliments often regarding their community policing activities. They're both self-motivated individuals, and they're doing an excellent job serving the community. We talked about the letter of commendation I spoke about on Deputy Disbro. We talked about the promotion of Deputy Mitchell Sykes to the Chief Deputy Marshal. That's on our agenda tonight, we'll cover that. Also, we talked about the training division commander job description, which is on our agenda this evening. We also talked about the merit increases, which is on our agenda tonight. We reviewed the July 4th holiday, where we responded to 34 calls for service when compared to 11 in the previous year. Overall, the holiday weekend went exceptionally well. There was not a single individual that we had to arrest, which we are very pleased with. The problematic things that we encountered, we were able to mitigate without any arrest. And then we talked about the speed radar sign on Chastleton Drive. We shared that data with everybody recently. That is going exceptionally well. We thank the corporate customer Sean Faye for assisting with the entire purchase of that sign. And then last, and we talk about the marine unit fundraising event back in May. A big thank you again to H&amp;S Services and Dan Healy from Healy's Landscaping, where we raised $14,000 in in-kind donations. And that's all I have to report on the police commission and police department.
Thank you. Town Administrator Chief?
The town is currently working on a backup generator for a water station for the water department at Montclair Memorial. We have $75,000 anticipated as an expenditure within our capital expenditure. I met with Greg Parrish last week, our water superintendent. Greg has indicated that he has received one quote and waited for the second quote, and both of those appear that they will come in under anticipated $75,000, which is good news. Hope to have those quotes in front of council either in September or October for your meeting. The HDAC, heating and air conditioning at the town hall, back on July 25th, we hired a HDAC engineering firm, water engineer to come in and conduct an assessment on the heating and air conditioning at the town hall. On July 31st, I shared those results with all the council members and the clerk within that email. You would have seen that they were recommending that two of the air conditioning units on top of the town hall's roof be replaced. Those were installed 23 years ago in 2001. One of them is currently leaking refrigerant and had to have two pounds of refrigerant placed into that unit to keep it stabilized for this cooling season. I hope to have estimates to the town council either in September or October for replacement of two air conditioners, the replacement of the humidifier units upstairs, and the removal of the heat exchange units out there that the voters of them are also seized up. And all that could be accomplished from 2001, it's 23 years old. The furnaces themselves, they are 2001 as well. We have all the heat exchangers serviced and found that they are low current leaks, which may be a health concern, which is good news, but they recommend in the next two to five years, we consider replacing the furnaces upstairs. So therefore, we recommend that the two air conditioners and the humidifiers be replaced, and you'll see those estimates in the next 30, 60 days. Town insurance claims, I was asked to reach out to insurance brokers to look at not only our healthcare insurance, but also our liability and our property insurance. I met with General Insurance with Charlie Keen two weeks ago. Charlie has all of our current policies that we hold with insurance and they will give us a competitive price, a quote on the policies for the town, and we have that before council in the following months as well. Fitness Center and Public Safety Building, just want to update everybody, if you've seen in your emails, we have received $40,000 in in-kind donations from residents in Long Beach. Therefore, we have ordered the fitness equipment for the Public Safety Building for the police and fire departments. Johnson Fitness Equipment on the Codway Road, Wisconsin, is the vendor that we're utilizing. Also, the wall artwork and the mirrors for the new fitness center are being donated at no cost to the town from a generous donor here in the town as well. And again, there's no cost to the town for any of these expenditures. And I could say altogether that the mirrors, the artwork, the equipment, here the $50,000 donation to town as you see from the residents. So we're very grateful to everybody and the support of that initiative. Tennis courts, the tree trimming, for the most part, that's been completed. We have one oak tree main at the southwest corner of the tennis courts due to oak wood. We cannot take that down until November, but that will get addressed in November, just in case anybody was curious on that. Stop 24, the accident that took out the park bench. Everybody received an email today notifying you that we're able to negotiate a settlement with the insurance company. That settlement was for $7,497.38, and that will close out that claim where a vehicle left the roadway, lost control, struck a park bench, took out a section of the fence at stop 24, and this is reimbursement for us to replace the damages from that accident. So no cost to the town. Over the weekend, a fire hydrant was hit at Foremont and Chastleton. I will be filing an insurance claim on that as well. Announcement report was taken. A local contractor struck the fire hydrant causing damage there. And then also at stop 23, two weeks ago, one of our major pillars, stop 23, was struck by a moving truck, and I currently am awaiting quotes on that and will be filing with the moving company, which I've already been in contact with to give us a reimbursement check that month as well. Any questions on the town administrator side? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Volunteer Fire Department, Dave.
This is for activity from January through July 31st of this year. On the fireside, 48 calls so far this year compared to 42 the year before. In this year, 36 of the calls have been Long Beach, five have been Doolman, and three in other areas. And even though we're not under contract with Doolman, we do have a mutual aid agreement that for calls, we're toned out simultaneously with Michigan. So that's why we have a few calls at Doolman. To break down the calls in the month of July, we had electrical equipment overheating, we had a hazardous condition which could have been, I think it was a gas leak for that call. We had eight false trips in average turnout per fire call in the last 12 months, and seven members on the medical site. Were 62 calls this year compared to 58 last year. During the month itself, we had two heart attack calls, four injury calls, five sick persons, one unconscious victim, and four lift assistance. Average turnout stands at five over the trailing 12 months for medical first responders responding. The average response time is just under five minutes, 4.57 for fire and 4.15 minutes for medical. And members have donated year-to-date a total of $1,501. Before the meeting, I was going to bring this up. Need to ask a question about the call. There was activity at stop 20 on Lake Shore Drive this weekend, and it came out as a possible drone. And it's always, that call can always be a scary call because we can only do so much from the beach, but we do what we can. In this call, I was, I was up on the street tracking traffic, John Law had the call under control, but John had told me they used the life ring system that was at stop 20, and they had the line, I think through all the hyperactivity, they sort of got the rope sort of in a knot. But they used it, they had a group of people out, actually a younger group, and the seas were rough enough where I think the young man got a little further out than he anticipated, and so the outcome was good. And I think, and Mark I think said, it's probably the first time the life rings have been used. And then I started thinking about this afternoon and thought, I wonder what, if I open the cabinet, what it's going to look like, you have the ring and this rope all in a knot. And I checked three, three rings along Lake Shore Drive, and it's all very well organized. So once again, that, that item, that addition, over the time, has probably saved a young man's life over the weekend, so. And my feeling also was, and I know Joy mentioned the letter in the Coast Guard, but it's one of the times where, as I, as I started talking about this call from shore, we really, we only can do so much. But it was really, it felt naked because you did not have any water resource capabilities. I don't think the vote of Long Beach, the vote was, I don't think DNRs and who we used to depend on, the Coast Guard, didn't happen. So I hope the letter that's being sent will make a difference. Thank you.
Dave, real quick, I got a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
When you open the box, the orange box, but does that automatically send, so you always will have to call 911?
Yes.
Okay. Just, I didn't know if that was an automated.
No, even if it was automated, I would, I would probably think the signal down on the beach would be non-existent.
Phones can be as well, so that's why I wondered if those were automated to help someone who didn't have a phone or cell service, then they didn't want to run up to the top of the.
And I don't know if we've had much vandalism with those. Mark, do you know?
Luckily, we have not. Other communities nearby us have had them thrown in the harbor net, often appear, but we've been very blessed not to have any issues. And our staff, like Deputy Disbro, who's walked in, they're very involved, you know, going out and checking the cabinets, making sure that they're not buried the same, that life rings were there. And residents have actually emailed my office as well, where they've kind of taken a little of the stops and said, hey, I want to take responsibility for making sure a life ring's there and functional and that. So thank you to the residents that have stepped up and very stopped to help us with that too.
Yeah, and the fact that on the face, as you're looking at that cabinet, if I already opened it up, the fact that it says stop 23, stop 22, because we know where the stops are, but if you're found out, it all looks the same, so it's a huge difference. Thank you.
And I just wanted to talk about like the mutual aid.
Don't go too far, Dave.
About the mutual aid, mutual aid, because it doesn't really apply to this, but the Chief Swistek was the one who I think you would, you reach out about the grant for the life rings and that the staff is always checking them, and even if you don't get reception, the fact that the stop sign is there and that you can at least get that out to somebody. I mean, when I drove by, there were, you know, police, there were different people in the water. So, you know, even if someone saw someone struggling, at least you can get them a life ring. And John, I think you said people have to hold on to the rope at the end of it?
Yeah, they brought the rope in, so the kid was all the way out on, he was beyond the buoy, and they brought the rope in. If somebody pulls short the end of the rope, then they bring the rope.
There's probably about 100 feet of rope line of that unit.
Thank you. Fire Commission, sir? Oh, huh.
Thank you.
We're calling the fire commission. So we held our fire commission meeting on August 1st. What we've been trying to do is piggyback on the quarterly schedule that the police commission has, so they're generally about a four quarterly, we're going to be at four, I'm sorry, they're three quarterly, we'll be at four quarterly. Shannon was there. We talked about just a few things. In fire contract, the clerk's office was interested in what it's going to, what the expenses for the coming year for 2025 were in terms of the fire, and I think the intent now, at least we're leaning towards adjusting the contract, making some new contract language in a couple of areas, with the idea that they'll have a better idea of where the cost will be for 2025. I think the thought was our accounting is done by Blake Apple, Blake Apple, who's I think going to get hold of Chris and Meg, and we're going to sit down and start to announce some details. So you guys will see a presentation sometime, maybe after the next fire commission, maybe this fall, or sometime before the end of the year possibly, of a proposal for a new contract. Essentially, we're going to leave it alone, other than a few type of, a few oddball changes, and then what we do with the money, and then if there's anything else the town is interested in in terms of before we do the contract. Things like the term, automatic extension, those kinds of things. There's an exhibit about the equipment. We've been very fortunate, the fire council, you know, as you know, purchased a new truck for us, and we have a new capital plan right now, a second replacement before that thing gets so on to it that it's no longer certified by the NMPA. So along that line, we'd like to see it ordered in '26. We were fortunate they don't make us pay for it till it gets here, so you'd have it ordered in '26, paid for in '28, you know, ordered, delivered in '28, and then it would be okay before '29 when the thing is no longer allowed to be used. Along the same line, we talked about PPE, there's some pants coats, we've got some of that equipment with grants, we hope to do that again, but it's one of those things we probably need to plan for in capital, and that's what we're doing with negotiating with, you know, the clerk's office about the contract. We also talked about the public safety building. I know you got that on the agenda, so I'm not going to belabor that. Mark will talk about that. Fire truck purchase, we talked about the 2025 delivery of the one that's going to replace the oldest turf, and I think you guys are working on some financing, the way I understand it, I think the center's office is taking that as, and it should have a proposal for it relatively soon. We hope to take delivery early in '25, so we really need you guys to take care of that before the end of the year, so you have that lined up. Next quarterly meeting is November 7th. I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Public Works, Kendra?
Public Works, DeNatney, July.
Park Board, Kendra?
Couple things on Park Board. I just, I want to announce that our wonderful camp director, Sarah Pluster, has decided to retire, got her 13 years. We've been extremely lucky to have her expertise and enthusiasm and knowledge for 13 years. This, this, this year, we had over 140 kids in camp. She's done an amazing job. She's just, with her kids getting a bit older and needing to have summers with them, this stuff isn't working for her right now. So the Park Board is going to be exploring other people to interview. So I do have a question. So they need to work with HR committee, right? Or, and chief, are you, it's one in the same, right? Like you're, go ahead.
Yeah, clerk, myself, and the HR committee, J.D. is chair of the HR committee, so definitely, please keep us within at least one member of the HR committee, one participating in the. of HR Committee, one participating in the process. And then if you just want to work through me, I can keep the HR Committee updated. And if there's any questions, we'll follow along.
Okay, we have some time because obviously camp just ended August 7th, but there are some meetings or some events that she has planned, some different potterings and things like that. We may have to cancel those, but we have plenty of time for the big important stuff, which is camp of next year. So I'll make sure that Paul and Zach and Cindy and Margaret talk to HR about that. And tennis courts are dominant, good. Those are being very well used by pickleball people and tennis. Park the Park was July 27th. I think that was a huge success. They talked about it at the Park Board. Everyone was, all the people who were there were very happy, and I think it was good turnout. So thank you to everyone, and enjoy your part on that. And the only other thing, I guess, Chris, this is a question to you, the trees at stop 29 that are placed on town property, the Park Board needs to take out. Can they go ahead and take those out and we can send an invoice to the resident or?
I just, I mean, I'll pop up regarding that, so I'll, I'll reach out to them and respond.
Reason for the rush, I mean, not only has it been three years, but with no response, but then we need to do the grass planted and that fall.
It looks like they want to give them a deadlock to the other month, so.
Yeah.
I'll follow with them.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. That's it.
Kendra, I can just recommend, having already occurred in the next Park Board meeting in the minutes, if they can just reflect a motion and a vote on posting the job, the camp director. Then once that's approved by the Park Board, then obviously we can go to advertising both locally on Indeed and social media once the Park Board has determined the amount of timeframe that there was in certain applications. Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Community Center, Anita.
Uh, Community Center met on August 5th. There was a discussion and a brief presentation by Doug Wickstrom, PSG Energy Group, is one of the many groups that does solar panels, but they provided Doug Wickstrom with preliminary financials on the three buildings, the Community Center, the Public Safety Building and Town Hall. There was a discussion that it's clearly not in our budget right now, but that it doesn't mean we wouldn't be willing to have a possible presentation by them and let me, let us know what we'd be talking about over the next couple of years. We are waiting for copper gutter pricing, correct? Is that part of?
Correct. And I did hear back from J B West today, the second contractor will be submitting their quote to J B West this week, and then it off to the insurance company. So that's a recent call.
Great. The Community Center is fully rented. There have been discussions over the last few months about Room 3, which has been used for several years for building commission storage. And Chris Willoughby has provided us with record retention rules. There has been discussion of hopefully in the next month, the building will, the things will be boxed up, things that need to be saved. They will likely be stored over at the Public Safety Building, and Room 3 then will be available for until. There is an item on the agenda about the planters in front of the Community Center. It's a, it's a small want by the Community Center, but there's also going to be a water damage issue, which may involve the inside of the building as well. So there, it is a little bit more critical. And they also discussed a couple of other higher-end items that came up at the budget, meaning that they still can continue looking into those projects. And last, Room 13 will be stripped, waxed, and sealed this coming weekend, hopefully. And that's it. I just want to thank the Community Center Committee. They work hard to, to do the things that they have to get done there and coming up with estimates and meeting with people there at Swan Lightning Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Budget and finance, Meg.
Budget and finance met on August 7th. Board, we can budget on that one. We're going to schedule a workshop to go more into the budget with council and let council members to ask any questions that they might have. Trista Hitesh, our advisor, will give me some dates that I'll refer her and I'll work with council to finalize a date for that workshop. Public hearing and first reading of the budget will take place at the September 9th council meeting, and then a vote would happen in October. So that is our budget schedule currently. I had been recently trusted in a pool before reinvesting any of our cash in CDs again. And through that process, our longtime management officer with Horizon Bank, I had reached out to her to let her know that she might receive a call from this pool, this trusted DNA. And through that process, she came back to me letting me know that Horizon Bank was willing to bring our town check in, along with our water operating and capital account interest rates from 3.4% where they currently are, were up to 4.75%. So Horizon came up with an 5% of the return we could get to the trusted DNA. So as opposed to CDs or even the trusted DNA pool, we would get this return on all of our money that is held at Horizon as opposed to any cash that we invested at any one point in time. So for the time being, I'm going to keep our cash with Horizon. That was the bathing. The next meeting is September 4th. I love you. Any questions?
Thank you. Human Resources, J D.
We met on July 17th. We had a few items on the agenda. We are continuing to go through the handbook. We went through the employee benefits and general information section. We also reviewed and approved the hiring process checklist. We can also finalize the compensation recommendations for the members of the Police Department, which we'll be discussing later this evening. And then the last item is obtaining a quote from council about revisions to, to the handbook before presenting them to, to the council. And Chris, I'm not sure if you had a chance to look at that.
I'll, I'll send that to you. I actually was just developing until you were done with your review, but I'll send it to you formally, but then, but generally, you know, approximately 10 hours at most.
Okay, great. And then we'll, I'll send that number on to council for approval.
Yeah, now I'll give it to you formally, right? So you have that.
Yeah, I'll pass that on then. And then the next meeting we have is on August 21st at 1:00 PM.
Thank you. Tree Board, Anita.
Tree Board did not meet, but they will be meeting in October.
Thank you. Building Commission met on July 12th and August 9th. Permits approved were 3007 Humble Portal, 1706 Lake Shore Drive for sand removal, but they're required to plant doom grass in the fall. 2207 Chassleton was approved except for retaining wall, and now they have a stop work order because they, first thing they built was the retaining wall, and they will need to go to the BZA for that. 2600 Bell Plain Patio, 2008 June Way, replace and repair a deck, 2021 Silver Tip for a fence, 1514 Lake Shore Drive, received a variance and their ultimate permit was approved. 3002 North Moore approved for retaining wall, 2938 Montclair Way, screen porch, 2101 Lake Shore Drive, a new home. Permits denied, 2003 Idlewood Trail was given a temporary certificate of occupancy, but they need to remove the stairs and the curb that are in the town right away. Citations were given to 2207 Chassleton, 2206 Oriole Trail. Other issues discussed by the Building Commission was the Building Department software is expected to be fully implemented by January 1st, 2025. The DNR is planning new northern or, or, ordinary high watermark delineation this fall. They think around October. And the Building Commission is having discussions regarding a dumpster ordinance, grandfather definition, dwelling unit, single family definition, accessory structure definition, and the parking ordinance. Next meeting will be 9/13/24. Any questions? Okay, BZA met on July 10th, had a preliminary hearing for 1902 Monrovia, who decided to amend their petition and continue their preliminary hearing on 8/14, which will be this Wednesday. Any questions?
What is that for? The preliminary, the 1902 Monrovia, do you recall?
For a front porch uncovered.
Oh, yes.
Or sorry, covered.
Front porch.
Not, not a three season, just a cover.
And that's the only thing on the BZA agenda then? That's the only thing on their agenda.
And just preliminary, they'll continue going.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Advisory Plan Commission, Anita.
Advisory Plan Commission met on July 15th. The whole business continues to be comprehensive plan review, and we've had discussions with Paul Lippens of McKenna, which did the 2016 comprehensive plan. He will be hopefully this week before our meeting on numbers, admitting a couple of different proposals that the APC will look at. And the other things on our agenda were a couple of surface and subsurface structure definitions and parking ordinances, which have gone to Building Commission. Next meeting is August 19th.
Thank you. Building Revenue Report, Meg.
There were 37 permits issued totaling $2,348,040, revenue $26,392. Three electric permits issued totaling $661, by Street Partners, with revenue $500. Legal expenses gained in July, 2007, or $6,173. County charities gained in July to Senator Comey for $5,720,50 cents. We missed a motion to approve expenses.
I'll make a motion to approve those expenses.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Unfinished business, Public Safety Building progress update.
I am very pleased to announce that on August 8th, I am holding in my hand the Commercial Onsite Sewer System Approval Letter from the Indiana Department of Health, from Director Michael Metter, who is the Environmental Public Health Division Director for the State of Indiana. We will be picking up our CEPIC permit for the new Public Safety Building this week. The documents I'm holding in my hand outline all the necessary requirements for the new Presby system that will be installed across the street from the Town Hall in the Town Park. And speaking to Attorney Willoughby earlier today, this project will require that we at least send out notification to three different contractors and/or vendors seeking quotes for this project. So therefore, I will be sending out a letter along with these specifications, seeking at least three quotes. And I hope to hand that information back to the council in September, at which time we can then ask the council to vote, to vote to award the project to one of the contractors that have been. I'd like to just answer at this time any questions council may have in reference to this. It's been a long process, almost a year since we started this. Big thank you to Attorney Willoughby, the other members of the Fire Department that assisted throughout this project, along with the patience that everybody had to get this across the finish line. So any questions?
I think also thanks to, I mean, Tom Dolph, I know many members of, you know, staff, town staff were also involved in this. I mean, it just required real consistency on the part of town staff to keep at this. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any idea when construction will begin?
At the September Town Council meeting, I'd like to have quote approved and would hope to start construction in the latter part of September, early October. My goal would be to have this complete sometime by November 1st. So and again, we'll have a better idea once we get the quotes in, in advance of your next meeting, I will get those quotes to everyone for review so that we can answer any questions, and then we'll also share them in our next public meeting with everybody as well.
Thank you. Welcome sign update, J D.
Yeah, there's actually two pieces here. We had a discussion last meeting about actually Sue's email about stop 13 and moving that sign from one side of the street to the other. Mark, do you have an update on the stop 13 sign? If any, any work had been done on evaluating whether it can go to the other side?
Well, Mr. Metter, yeah, I had talked to Tom Dolph. He tells me that that conversation had come up previously, and the sign was not moved due to the construction of the two new homes that are on the lakeside there. So Tom's currently off on family medical leave. When he gets back, he and I will discuss going down there, assessing any possible location that we could place it in the town right away.
Great, thank you. And then the other side of that is more on the welcome sign, is a proposal will be coming to the council from Planned Environmental Associates. It's the same group that actually did all the work in 2017 for the last version of the sign. A lot of work around surveys, right of ways, all of this work has been done. I reached out to them to see what they could bring to the table to resurrect their past work. It's in my inbox. I've not fully reviewed the script of work, but in concept, it's about taking the design that we, the committee derived, make it professional, a few different types of variants based on footprint, and then apply it to the work that they had done previous. I did see the number without looking at the details. It's 4650, 4,650. We've talked about previously that no funding this year had been dedicated if that needs to be raised privately. I've already been told that that would not be a problem, but that proposal will be coming to council about taking it to that next step with a professional plan. That'll be coming for September.
Sounds good. Thank you. Any questions? Insurance plan, Community Center roof.
Just to give everybody a little bit of history on this, back on base side, during the severe storm, where the town had experienced hail, we had all the town facilities looked at, and the only town facility that sustained hail damage was our community center. And we know the community center is a very large facility, and roof is about 450 square with shingles on that particular roof. So we had filed an insurance claim through Michigan Insurance. The claim was approved, and the estimated cost of repairs to that building, and this is without the replacement of the copper gutter, so this is something to change because copper gutter is going to be a little bit more expensive. But the last assessment we received was 128,000, 128,057, fifty-four cents. We have received our first check from the insurance company for $82,000, $82,352.60. Once the new roof is installed, we can then go back and recover the depreciation of $45,705.4. Contract was shared with the Town Council last week for review, was also shared with our attorney, is just for the replacement of the asphalt shingles currently. It's not for any of the work related to. It's not for any of the work related to the gutters. That proposal I will have to at the September meeting, because there was a conversation that we wanted to have for the historical value that building copper gutters placed back on it. So, we looked at the cost of copper and aluminum, we've been negotiating with the insurance company. We hope to hear back from the insurance company in the next two weeks as to what we would receive for the replacement of the copper gutters. So, it's a nice agenda, asking that the council authorize the town council president to sign the proposal with J.D. West Roofing, who is also the preferred contractor that our insurance company, National Fire and Gas Authority, have worked with throughout this process. Both our insurance adjuster and J.D. West, their outside adjuster had worked together to make sure that all of the amenities on that roof are covered. And once the contract is approved, there will be a pre-construction meeting with myself and the members of the community center committee to make sure that everything is in line with the contract, the color of the shingles, and then also to accommodate for all of our tenants and the residents that visit the YMC at the center, so there's no disruption over there. So, any questions on that? Again, like I said, it's about easily $128,000 in work, and the town will be responsible for $1,000 of the documentation.
I have a question. Did anybody go up on the roof, has anybody from the town, like Larry or Carter or anybody on the building commission been up there to verify that there is damage?
I went up with Patrick just on the front portion above the entry door where you went from the Y, and Patrick had pointed out to me some of the locations where the hail damage was at. It did not go onto the backside, which faces out to the golf course, that's where he said there was substantial damage on the backside. But our insurance company sent their adjuster out, who's been working with J.D. West, just to confirm that there was no damage in there. Larry has been kept in the loop with all the emails referencing work in that, because J.D. West is also quite aware that they would have to file for a building permit before any work can be commenced as well.
Okay. Doug has been up there too.
Okay.
Yeah, Tom, that's true, Joy. Doug actually went up and looked at the copper structures up there, because some of the copper vent structures that are up there sustain hail deaths as well, and that's another price that we're waiting for the copper vendor to give us a price on fixing those on the roof as well.
Okay. I will say that I did contact two different roofing companies about hail damage. One of them said that there was hail damage, one said there wasn't, and I contacted my insurance company, and they sent somebody out. And while they were up there, they were FaceTiming me, just talking about that there wasn't extensive damage. So, you know, one of them was J.D. West, the other was Kohler, but I thought that the insurance company handled it well and said no, so.
I'd like to add that on that particular day when the hail started, I was in my office here at the town hall, and I can attest to the fact that the hail was quite large inside my window here. But then when I talked to the employees at our town's garage across the hacienda, we had that facility evaluated, and they had smaller size hail and minimal hail compared to the amount and the size of the hail we had here. And the insurance adjuster said the same thing, one side of the street could get in part of the other side of the street. So, it explains that, you know, on the south side of the community center, it has much more damage than it does on the front portion.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make that motion to accept the, what's the bathroom? The town council president.
The J.D. West Roofing construction contract.
Yes, I'm reading that motion.
Do we have a second? I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Training Division Commander, job description.
After July, town council meeting, the job description was referred back to the police commission for review and input. The police commission did meet, have discussed the job description on page four, bullet points two and three. We have added that the Training Division Commander shall successfully complete the Certified Instructor Development Course with the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy and shall maintain the certification per ILMEA Academy policy. We also added, shall provide a minimum, excuse me, one second. Shall provide a minimum of twenty-four or more hours of classroom instruction to members of the department or other law enforcement members annually. So, those two bullet points were added. Aside from that, there's no changes to the Training Division Commander job description, and I would respectfully ask that the town council vote to accept and pass this updated, or actually new, job description.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve the job description for the Training Division Commander.
Do we have a second for discussion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? On to new business, recommendation for merit pay increases, police department promotions.
I would just like to give a little bit of history on this. So, back on April 10th, our Chief Deputy Marshal James Foley retired after 26 years of service to the Long Beach Police Department. He served as the second-in-command for the police department. Upon his retirement, Deputy Marshal Mitchell Sights was promoted and now assumes the responsibilities as the Chief Deputy Marshal. Additionally, back in April, Deputy Marshal Anthony Farthing, back in January, graduated from the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy's Certified Instructor Course. Upon completion of his certification, Deputy Marshal Farthing was promoted to the rank of corporal and has assumed the responsibility as a Training Division Commander. That was previously held by the late Deputy Marshal Toga Babcock, who unfortunately passed away from a sudden heart attack back in 2022. Corporal Farthing's new role as a Training Division Commander will also serve as a supervisor within the patrol division. So, now we have Sergeant Sights and Corporal Farthing, who serve as part of the department's command staff. At the May HR Committee, we discussed this, and then also last month's HR Committee meeting, we had discussed both of these recent promotions, and we had discussed a merit increase for both of these individuals. One of the points of discussion came up, why we're not going to be paying the newly-appointed Chief Deputy Marshal the same salary range as the previous Chief Deputy Marshal. The explanation they gave for that is that the previous Chief Deputy Marshal position was an individual with 27 years of experience, vast amount of knowledge in the law enforcement profession, and has received longevity increases for a period of time compared to the Chief Deputy Marshal, which is now Sergeant Sights, who is a six-year veteran of the police department. Not taking away at all Sergeant Sights' abilities to perform the job, performs exceptionally, is a very brilliant young man with a bright future ahead of him, but I just wanted to share that the reason that we're not using the same salary range of $36 to $41 is because the previous salary ordinance was set at the salary range for the previous senior employee. So, therefore, what I'm asking for the council tonight is to consider is that we need to amend the current salary ordinance and change the salary range for the sergeant. The HR Committee recommended that we place it on the low end at $32 and on the high end $40. So, that's changing it from 36 to 41, go to 32 to 40. And then we have to add to the salary ordinance the new position of the corporal, who are Training Division Commander, and the HR Committee recommended that we set that salary range at $30, and then on the high end, $40. And again, that's just for ranges for any individual within that particular base scale. The document in front of you tonight that I shared with you is a breakdown for Sergeant Sights and Corporal Farthing. At the HR Committee, we've discussed their currently hourly rate. We discussed a 5% increase and a 7% merit increase to their current hourly rate. It was decided upon an HR Committee that we would recommend to the council a 7% increase, which would take Sergeant Sights from his current hourly rate of $31.86, would increase it to $34.09. And again, that would be within that salary range of $32 to $40. And then Corporal Farthing, his current hourly rate is $29.72 an hour, increasing that by 7%, would take it to $31.80, and again, within the salary range of $30 to $40. Out with the HR Committee, I was asked to do some comparisons, so I reached out to two departments. One, the LaPorte County Sheriff's Department, obviously a much larger department than us, but is here in LaPorte County. The LaPorte County Sheriff's Department for Sergeant with six years of experience currently pays their sergeants $33.88. And then I reached out to the Trail Creek Police Department, which is a department in similar size, however, they only police one community, were responsible for three communities, and their sergeant was making $29.29 an hour. So, the question on the HR Committee was, were our recommendations on 7% merit increase, were they within the norms of other surrounding agencies? And I will attest to the fact that, yes, they are. So, with that, I would ask respectfully that the council consider increasing the current hourly rate for Sergeant Sights and Corporal Farthing by the 7%, changing the salary ordinance to reflect such, and then also changing the salary ranges for the two positions and adding the rank of corporal that they currently do not have on the salary ordinance as it stands today.
Point of clarification here, just on the process, do we have to amend the ordinance first?
We defer the training. Yeah, you will need to have an ordinance, and to be able to do that, that's technically introducing a new ordinance, even if it's verbatim left for that law. So, you, my opinion would be that you have to vote unanimously to adopt such an ordinance, suspend your rule to be able to do that in one meeting. I don't know if time is of the essence, but that's the only way that you'd be able to do it tonight. Otherwise, you'd consider that on first reading tonight, and the rest of those couldn't take effect until you changed that category. Now, you can.
Because one category doesn't exist.
Yeah.
Doesn't exist? The corporal?
So, the amendment would take, the corporal category doesn't exist in the ordinance itself, which is why the amendment is more specifically important there, while the adjustment for the sergeant is relevant as well.
And to change the question, there is no question. I would only ask the council to view consideration to retroactively going back to a period of time, you know, reflecting that in the hourly rate, because both of them have been performing in those job functions since April of this year and have performed quite well, especially over the busy summer season as well. So, that's all that I have to add.
Okay, so, my understanding is we should amend, or we should do the salary ordinance first, like at the next meeting?
Yes, so that's, you can only do it all on meetings if everybody's unanimous. If there's an ordinance that you're going to consider with these changes, you can consider the amended ordinance that adds that classification requirement for corporal and changing the line items that were mentioned on first reading. If everybody isn't comfortable with that, then I suggest you roll it over, and then being changed would be still follow what Chief indicated, is that you can make a determination in that, that things are retroactive to a date certain, if that's what your pleasure is.
Are we about to discuss it? Are we allowed to discuss if we're all unanimous and want to do that?
I think you have an open discussion.
Like, so we have an open discussion?
You need to know what the language is. Yeah, I think that you should have an open discussion when it's over here.
I'm kind if they want to do this, but if somebody would like to wait, I'd find that as well.
My question is, without adding sergeant and corporal to their titles, if we sought the increase of 7% to both of them, are those salary ranges then exceeding the current category that they fall, because I don't have the salary range in front of me? So, can we honor the 7% and then go back retro and change title?
Currently, for the deputy marshal, which both offices held the deputy marshal position prior to the promotion, was $26 to $35 on the high end. So, all are within that range. And again, we're in no rush to get this passed, so if the council wants to, you know, have a ordinance drafted for the next meeting and write, we're open to that as well.
So, my thought would be, could we not today agree to approve deputy marshal salary increases for both effective, the August date of today's approval, not backdating, but at the 7% that both fall under the 35 range? Then we can come back at a later meeting and recognize the change in.
Category.
Category.
Yeah, you may do that as part of your salary ordinance, like you don't have to have an extra stuff in there.
Not to give them raises.
Yeah, I think the only thing that makes it reasonable is, there's an expectation when you get a bump in rank, but here it's understood that you're kind of carted four horse, right? But then, again, you'll have salary ordinance for next year anyway, so then you could just make it at that time, and we don't have to amend this one.
Yeah.
As long as they fall at the same range, and then it's effective upon passing, unless there's, I don't know what the retroactive discussion is, if there's a date going back from tonight for instance, or if it's going forward, so that would be up to you, but clerk could do that.
No, I think to Shannon's point, you're correct, and it will need to have probably near October meeting, the salary ordinance to 2025 in front of the council on that. So, at that time, we could add the corporal position, we could change the salary ranges for the corporal position. There's going to be other amendments to salaries across the board if the council so chooses to give, you know, a COLA cost of living increase for 2025 as well. So, that could all be handled when that ordinance is drafted at one time.
That seems to be cleaner.
I think so too.
Yeah, so I guess my question would be then, if we take Shannon's recommendation, it'd be, when do we have an effective date, and then the hourly rate, and then the clerk's office will make that change, you know, at the appropriate pay.
Would the effective date be today when we make the.
Yeah, with no shift. So, next week is next payroll period, so it could be effective next pay period.
I thought we wanted to do retroactive.
This week.
Yeah.
Why do I need it?
Retroactive, I thought, to April, a date in April.
That's when they started with.
Yes, so retroactive to a date in April, when they started the responsibilities.
So, that would have to go back and figure.
What?
If you would choose that route, then you'd have to go back and figure, you know, the pay change from that time, so.
Besides, besides the fact, for me is, the promotion occurred, the job description was just approved. Like, this is a little bit out of order for me. Generally, it would be a job description promoted into that adjustment on pay. So, going retroactively back, I'm struggling with. I would prefer the next pay cycle, which is either this week or next week, just from a process standpoint, and then the making the promotion that was announced on February 23rd, reality, especially for the corporal, through the salary ordinance in the fall, cleaning everything out, then making it, seems to be a better process to me, as opposed to going retroactively. making it, seems to be a better process to me, as opposed to going retroactively.
And speaking of both officers, I'm not going to get any objections from either one of them. Maggie, is it possible that we could change, since this week is our payroll week, could you change it in the system, making it effective for this particular period?
Yes, I can. Retroactive would be more difficult, I can figure it out, but it would affect various things, so...
And overtime rates.
Yeah.
And all of these things.
It would take some time.
Yeah, pension.
How manually can you do it?
So I make a motion to approve a salary increase for both Deputy Marshal Mitch Seitz and Deputy Marshal Matt Farthing affected this pay cycle, and we move forward with the 7% increase for both officers.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
And that just keeps the amendment to change salary range and to introduce corporals' job description for next meeting.
And we don't get it. Or just, we need to go to the next year's salary ordinance, so there's really no amendment other than preparing for Mexico.
Perk, yeah. Okay.
Okay, Healy's Landscaping estimate, $1,295, planting north of the public safety building.
The landscaping around the public safety building, just to give you a little bit of history on that, back latter part of June, just before the ice cream was social, we came up with an initiative that the police department and the fire department became, through volunteers at no cost to the town, that the fire department would pay for two seven loads of river rock at the cost of $3,000, that the fire department would cover the invoice, and that the police and fire would then install the river rock around the public safety building. The initial estimates to have this done were upwards of over $10,000 to have a professional landscaping company do this. So kudos to both the fire department and police department. John Wall was out there, nearly putting a cardiac arrest that day, as hard as he worked out there, and everybody else, Matt Gingerbo was with us at times as well. So thank you to everybody that came together to make that happen. Left in landscaping, the only thing we have left in landscaping is the installation of three evergreens, a Canadian hemlock, and then two giant evergreens that Healy's has quoted for $1,295. These would be installed on the north side of the public safety building, providing some screening to our closest residents in the north. I'm asking for the council's approval to approve this request, allow the installation of the final landscaping piece. I spoke to Matt earlier today, and should we touch on this as far as the merit we could pay this for?
We have a line here that is titled "Other Charges to Public Safety Building." We actually put the furniture, that was the town's portion to this account, we had $15,000 out of budget, and furniture's a little over $12,000, so there's $2,644 remaining, but I don't believe it's planned for anything, so I do think we can put this there. So, any questions left out?
Not about funding, but I have a question on choice of evergreen slash overviene, whatever we want to call, because I look around, my neighbors, and tends to be a favorite of our deer. And is it money best spent right now? Is there another source of fencing or something that the deer won't enjoy?
I actually just planted last fall 11 hemlocks, and I have hemlocks in my backyard, I haven't even touched them. So it may be a difference, because I know that John Wall Chief, we met with these homeowners, there have been various different things that have been presented to them. So the hemlocks, the Canadian hemlock, they literally didn't touch them. I did put some fencing around mine on the corner that are the, that are a different kind of hemlock, and because they were munching on those a year or two ago, and you can't see it, the protection around it, and they've left those alone. But the Canadian hemlocks have been very successful with the deer.
Great, this is for one hemlock and two overviens.
They're overviens, they really love.
They do.
The homeowners have requested these specific ones at recommendation of the landscaping experts that have met with them, and they're aware that they may have to put down some deer repellent, you know, in the vicinity of this. There's a lot of obstacles for the deer to kind of get there, there's some river rock to be installed near this. The backyard's got a lot of vegetation that deer could consume as well, but this is at the request of the homeowners, they have asked for these specific types of landscaping.
I would make a motion that we approve Healy's Landscaping for $1,295. So, I mean, because the homeowners have requested it, there have been numerous meetings with the particular homeowners about exactly what they envision there. The other homeowners were fairly easy to work with, and they've already had those planted, so I would make a motion to approve this.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Water Service Stop 17 and 18 Drainage Project.
So the documents that are before the council and are shared with you from House Engineering, members of the Public Works Committee, myself, Street Department Superintendent Town Golf, Water Superintendent at Great Parish, have met with members of House Engineering and Woodruff and Sons to conduct a closeout meeting on the Stop 17, 18 Drainage Project and on the Water Service Replacement Project. It's kind of our final punch list of items to make sure that all restoration, lawn restoration, and all of the little integral parts of the project were completed. There were no items on the punch list to be completed, therefore, House Engineering has sent off the certificate of substantial completion with signature by both the town and Woodruffs, and we're seeking the approval by the council to allow the council president to execute those certificates of substantial completion, so that we can get those finalized and submitted.
Do we have a motion for a move?
Just for clarification again, Mark, that's for the $21,888 contract change?
That'd be the next one for the change order. Change order would be the next item on there. So this is just, this is for approval acceptance...
Okay.
Approval and acceptance of the work that was performed on both of those projects, that the town is satisfied with the work that was performed during the major projects.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make that motion, that we approve that.
Okay, I'll second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Water Service Replacement Project, change order number one.
The change order that's before the council this evening for $21,888, 18 cents, is for the work that's performed on the water service improvement project along Lake Shore Drive. It was for excavations that were done to locate and identify existing water service lines along the Lake Shore Drive from Stop 30P to Stop 31, which consisted of 23 locations that were not previously known by town officials. This work was done outside of the normal scope of the agreed upon contract, therefore, we're asking for this change order to be approved by the town council. And speaking to House Engineering, Brad Minnick, Brad also on the email that I shared with you, has indicated that this is nearly $22,000 worth of work, and that he still believes that we will be underneath the original quote for this project. So asking for approval of change order number one.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, I'll make the motion to approve change order number one.
Do we have a second for discussion?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. DNR permits to bulldoze the dunes, Kendra.
Yes, this is just a, kind of an FYI for the public, it's not a matter that's before the town council, but I just wanted people to know that there are three homeowners on Lake Shore Drive applied for a permit from the DNR to bulldoze the dunes, bulldoze the beach in front of their house, houses. So we were notified, a resident was notified, you can sign up to be notified of these things just as a regular resident, which someone was, and so I'm just letting, again, this is not a town matter, but I did personally write a letter against it. So there are, it's the home Kathy Brennan, 1818, Lake Shore Drive, James Verdurami, 1814, Lake Shore Drive, and the other house, Richard Kepel and Teddy, 1816, Lake Shore Drive. They are claiming to protect an existing septic system, wind blowing sand that has accumulated along the applicant's concrete seawall will be pushed back down onto the beach and into the water's edge. So I just want to make people aware that that is out there in front of the DNR, and I've got some copies out there from email, and if anyone has any questions in the public or here at the meeting.
Can we answer a question now?
Sure.
So does this mean, I mean, I have huge dune, nobody can walk up the dune, nobody can get to the beach in front of my house. Is this mean that we now can apply to get our dune, there's accumulated from the houses next? Is there a way that I can get this dune resolved? Is this what we're saying? That's why.
Can I add to that?
Yeah.
I also add to that conversation with the Associate General Counsel for the DNR, who by receiving that phone call tells me that they're interested in making sure that there's reconciliation and cooperation, at least seemingly with policies, but can't give you legal advice, but ultimately it's a jurisdiction issue. So it may be that you have to go to the DNR and the town. The DNR has jurisdiction over things that it has jurisdiction over, meaning the length of the natural ordinary high watermark, which is determined by delineation, and not to make things difficult, but it's not a simple answer. You may be able to, is the answer, but nobody knows that sitting there. The DNR has jurisdiction, or may have jurisdiction, the town has jurisdiction, or may have jurisdiction. I'm going to guess that for instance, these permits, even if they were granted, they likely say subject to any permits that are required by the town that fall within the town's jurisdiction, because there might be heavy equipment permits, there may be land disturbance permits, there may be some of the work that is south of the natural ordinary high watermark. So the answer is maybe, but there's two different jurisdictions that you have to contend with.
So first is the DNR, or first is the town?
It just depends on where your work is and the delineation, where's the natural ordinary high watermark, where's your work going to be done? So that's your starting point, and if it's away from the lake, if it's south of the natural ordinary high watermark and has been delineated, then that's the town's jurisdiction. If it's a little bit of each, it's both. I would imagine one probably takes a little more time, meaning the DNR, but I can't speak to that, because they have their own process. Sorry to speak too much, I'm trying to make it as simple as I can, which is makes it ultimately clear as well, is you have two jurisdictions, maybe a little...
Okay, thank you. All right.
Thanks. I'm not sure I got the answer, but, okay.
Well, we're not here to give advice.
No, I understand, but...
Okay, thank you. Dear management, Kendra.
Second one, topic of the night. I have just been struggling with what to do in town. I think we all can agree that we're all going to disagree, but that there is a problem with the deer and something should be looked at a little bit further, so I would like to just have a simple discussion tonight, or just to say that I am going to look into that, and I'm going to see what we can do. I didn't, you know, I don't know what the answer is, I know it's completely divisive subject, and it always has been, but I did want to start with asking, Meg, I think it's a question for you, if there were to be a deer reduction thing that happened, could we, if the council approved it, take money from the capital plan? Since there's no, you know, there was no line item created, there is no more grant money available for stuff like that anymore?
I think it would depend what that costs, and if the council so chose, they could appropriate, we do have plenty of cash in the general fund, for example.
Yeah, okay.
But, but within the capital plan, we are just planning to spend most of it, but...
Okay.
There are some options.
Okay.
So I just really just want to open it and start having an ongoing discussion, maybe keep it on the agenda for the months to come, or even, I'd like to even hold maybe some sort of meeting at the public safety building, just for questions and answers, or to start. I personally don't agree how, I don't want to go down the road of how the previous, you know, God bless them for trying every which way, the Blue Ribbon Committee and things like that that were done a couple of years ago, but it really didn't result in anything, so I don't think turning it back onto the public for a vote is the way to go, just I don't think anything's going to change with that, I don't know. I guess I'm just, I think it should be something that, I think it's probably the most talked about thing in town, but I think the town just needs to start talking about it. So I'm just being transparent, and I'm going to start looking into different things that we can do. And I'll share everything that I find on email and things like that, I've sent a few emails, just asking different questions and stuff, so I'm going to, just like to keep that conversation open and let people know. That's it, we're not really...
If you want support, I'll definitely agree with that.
Okay. So it's a lot of research and rules.
Okay. Community Center, capital expenditure request, repair upgrade of masonry planters boxes.
As Anita discussed during the Community Center Committee report, the committee has presented up three proposals from three different contractors to conduct masonry work outside of the primary entry doors to the community center, that would be the three doors closer to the gymnasium. Work there would be to remove and replace two planters with a new wall coping with window sills, grind through some tuck pointing to the existing limestone, as well as placing a new limestone cap throughout that area. The least amount on the quotes was $8,100 from Adams Masonary Incorporated, and then second to that was Lars and Nadelston at $15,625. So recommendation of the Community Center Committee is seeking approval of the council to authorize Adams Masonary not to exceed the $8,100 to conduct the work outside of the Community Center entryway. I would also like to add that there was a concern that was shared when the masonry contractors came out, that as they get into this project, they could encounter additional work that is not seen currently until there is excavation that is done. I asked for the cost of that maybe, they were unable to put a dollar amount on that, they said it could be a few thousand dollars, or it could be substantially more. So I told them that we'd have to come back to the council if it was anything in excess of the approved amount of $8,100. So, any questions? And your question before you...
Is the excess amount, does any of that have to do with the wall that's behind the planters?
It does, the wall that, the joints of the planters, the exterior wall of the community center. And then I would add also that this $8,100 request is within the capital expenditure request for the community center this year in our capital expenditure outline, so that we do have the funds, as confirmed by both Meg and Trista, in the capital outline to cover this request.
Is there a way to check the wall from the inside? I mean, what if we remove the planters and then the wall is...
we do have the funds, as confirmed by both Meg and Trista, in the capital outline to cover this request.
Is there a way to check the wall from the inside? I mean, what if we remove the planters and then the wall is massive, expensive?
I don't believe so, because it's just below those windows. I could ask Doug, who's going to be familiar with that, being a previous architect. So I think the main concern was just, once they pull off some of this concrete, seeing what's, you know, around the surface of it and that, so.
Okay, the one from Zielkowski Construction, I didn't see anything about the planters in that.
They, Joy, they pitched out to them, asking to be more specific on their call, and they were not responsible on sending back a second quote to kind of better outline the work, because they reduced the overall scope from what they asked for back on May 16th, and only two out of three were more responsive as to the work that they wanted to do currently.
Okay. And I see on the ones in Danielson, not that, not that Adams would do this, but they talked about keeping the soil and reusing it. I mean, I think that's, you know, 100-year soil in there, and I don't think they want to reuse it.
Anita was present, and we talked about, Janice Brown would probably appreciate if we replaced that soil in there. So we talked about possibly having the town's public works department, having our staff going in and doing some work in there, covering out the trough, and getting us some soil in there for plantings in the future.
Yeah, if we're going to start digging for a second, use that soil.
I did talk additionally, Janice Brown and Beach Garden Club, and Beach Garden Club would be willing to take on, coming up with different estimates about soil, about whether they can do some kind of tubs inside, so that will protect the wall if there's any damage. They do know that this work will be done, they'd like to be there when the work is done. They did ask about the wall, if there's any way anyone could kind of, once we know when the work will be done, kind of start looking into that wall from the inside, even if you have to take it out and there's some repair. There may be some estimates, but they're willing to take that on and provide council with additional estimates for what we will need to fill those with soil, or some kind of tubs that will protect the walls from water damage. And I would make the motion that we accept option number two for $8,100 from Adams Masonry.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Town insurance policy deductibles, request council approval for recommended increase from 1,000 to 5,000 on various policies.
So as we discussed earlier, the community center insurance claim for the hail damage, $3,000 deductible on that. After filing that claim, and then giving some consideration to my recent meeting with General Insurance to discuss various options for the town of Long Beach to save annually on our policies related to liability and property, I began to give some thought to our deductibles. When I look back on the history, aside from our recent claim to the community center, we have not had any claims, thankfully, on either automobile accidents other than spin shield, which is comprehensive, and on our facilities. So therefore, I looked at the possibility of increasing our deductible from 1,000 to 5,000 on our structures. This would save us annually 2,462, just on the initial estimates. So my recommendation would be that we have the council tonight approve changing our deductibles with the insurance company, retroactive to be obviously tomorrow date, from 1,000 to 5,000 on our deductibles. When researching other communities, I have found that the majority of other municipal communities have deductibles that are 5,000 to 25,000. And what they do is they have like a rainy day fund, or an insurance fund set up that covers their deductibles in case they ever happen in claims. I see this as a perfect way that we could reduce our overall expenditures, mainly what we spend on our liability and property. And as we move forward with reviewing the upcoming proposals from both Michigan Insurance and General Insurance for 2025, I've asked that when they price off the various policies, that they give us some recommendations on the deductibles, so that the town council can look at our options, and then we can then weigh out the cost savings overall, to see if it is worthwhile for us. So I'd open it up for any discussion, I'm more willing to go back to the insurance companies and see additional information for you. But I use as an example myself, when I look at my own homeowners insurance, I have a $2,500 deductible for hail damage on my house. The town of Long Beach, we only have a $1,000 deductible. So I think it would be worthwhile if we consider, you know, increasing our deductibles overall. Questions?
What would be the savings if we took it from five to 10?
I can find out, JB, but I would definitely say that it would be much more than the 2,462 currently. So I can email Stacy to find out. But as the email that I shared with the council back Friday, August 2nd, Stacy indicated that the annual savings from end of property deductible on the town of Long Beach policy, and she stated the policy number to 5,000 on all locations is 2,462, if we were to make that change effective of 7/31. And the pro rate, proactive rate of returning on our premium would be $927 for the remainder of this year. So as today, they remain with a $1,000 deductible, you know, we could vote tonight, if the council recommended, we change it to 5,000, and your next council meeting, I could come back with additional information on the $10,000 deductible, or you can hold this over to your next meeting. I beg your pleasure, we're having these checkouts.
Yeah, I mean, I, any savings we can get short term, short term, I think we'd be in favor for, but yeah, I'd like to know the incremental steps between five to 10, 10 to 20, 20 to 30, to see what the balance is. Because if I'm understanding things correctly, is that when we make a claim, we're blowing way through the 10,000. We're blowing through the number anyway, it's substantial, and if we kept the rainy day fund, which, which has a balance now in excess of the 10,000, we would have to, we'd be okay. So I.
Yeah, can you email or ask the underwriters to call us for 10,000, and the size of 30,000, and then give us a breakdown that I can share, and then email to all of you.
But for tonight, 5,000 is a good start.
Dead emotion?
Yeah, I was going to say.
I think it is.
I'll second that. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. New road salt storage facility for public works department.
Well, Meg, to start this discussion, I'm going to pass down some photographs, and I apologize if I didn't, because I was trying to save this on some color ink. But our current road salt storage facility at our public works department, in speaking to our street superintendent, who has been with this now for 32 years, tells me that this structure has been in need of direct replacement for some time. IAM, during the inspections, have indicated that our current salt storage facility is not up to IED standards, also could bring about MS4 complications as well, and that has been discussed in recent months, that we could pursue replacing this facility. Currently, we can hold 200 tons of salt in the current structure. The goal is to construct a new facility, either 40 by 40 or 30 by 50, where we can store 600 ton of salt. One of the other things that we face annually is if we have a mild winter, and we do not take delivery of the salt that we are contracted with the, by our state contract with Cargill, we do not have the roof to store the salt. So therefore, we have to pay $30 a ton to have the salt stored at Cargill and their facility. To eliminate the costly storage fees, which are on the low end of a couple thousand dollars, on the high end, to be as costly as $9,000 annually, we are proposing to construct a new salt storage facility at our public works department. We have already begun to clear the ground in an area that would be suitable for the new salt storage building. We have done the locates, as far as locating the water main that runs into the street parking garage currently. We have removed $4,500 in tree work to make room for this facility. And then we have also consulted with both Meg and Trista as to a plan on how we can pay for this facility. The initial estimates are 90 to 100,000. That would encompass approximately 65 to maybe 70,000 from the actual construction of the barn by a construction vendor, approximately 20, maybe 25,000 of concrete work, keeping in mind that the concrete has to be a certain thickness, and have a certain additive in the concrete, so that when the salt is placed in the barn, the salt does not eat through the concrete. We have looked at our general operating budget, and we have found areas within the general operating budget for 2024, and in our capital outlay funding for 2024, that would cover the cost of this project. The reason I asked to have this placed on tonight's agenda is I wanted to begin the discussion, answer any questions, and to inform the council that the next month, we will have at least two bids for construction of the facility at their September meeting for consideration. And in advance of that, was just to get out ahead of any questions or any research that we can do that will help move this project along. We're looking at this month, in August, is going to be our first invoice that we'll be receiving for the storage of salt at Cargill, as all the snow last winter was pretty mild winter, other than that one Friday where we had dealt down with about 36 inches of snow. So therefore, we didn't go through as much salt as we anticipate annually. So we're going to be looking at some considerable storage fees. If we do not have a solution in place before January 1st of 2025, and/or if we do not use a substantial amount of salt in November and December of this year prior to January 1st, January 1st of next year, speaking to town of, we will be faced with additional storage fees that will add up monthly throughout the winter, if we do not take delivery of that salt. So this is a solution that could save the town 5,000 to 10,000 dollars in more in storage fees, which is about 10% of this project. So therefore, tonight, again, I just want to answer any questions, do any additional research for the council, and or have Meg send us any questions you may have on how the town could potentially fund this 90 to 100,000 dollar project this year.
There was also quite an extensive discussion of this at the budget and finance meeting. Meg and Trista went through quite a bit, different, different ways that, that this can be done, and again, we talked about the savings in storage, we talked about the need for it, that it's, anyhow, there was quite, quite a good discussion about it.
Mark, go ahead. Is, how does the Cargill contract work? Do we, is it a yearly thing? Do we reduce the amount we want to take from that?
We have been ordering the minimum, and we're, and we're stuck with the minimum is leaving us with salt to store, just because our winters have not been that difficult for us to manage. And then the other problem is, is that we only can hold 200 tons. This new solution will increase to 600 ton. And I asked Tom, I said, make sure when we do this, we do it once, and we do it right, the 600 ton to be appropriate. And Tom said, that's exactly what we've been looking for for years, is if we can do 600 ton in storage, our annual commitment in the contract, we can fulfill that, and then alleviate any storage fees in the future.
So 600 tons is a, that's what you're saying, is the storage, but what is the, what's the minimum then, that we would have to order? If we, if we had 600 tons in storage, could we go a couple years without working on salt then, if we had much of my winters?
It all depends on the weather, the weather's nasty. This contract gives you pricing that all these big municipalities get. If we don't do this, run up spot market ourselves, and sometimes you can't get it if it's a nasty year. So you're on a balance beam with whether you order it under that contract, and have it guaranteed that you're going to have some that year. If you get a really nasty year, and you don't invoke this contract, you're on the spot market, sometimes you can't even find it. Remember when Jayden Berg got in trouble in Chicago? I mean, there are times where you cannot find it. So we kind of, this is what Tom has done over the years, to get to the point where you have a commitment with these people, but now you're stuck, because once you commit to that contract amount, you've got to do something with it. There was a time when some of the other municipalities, we would supply them with salt, and then that relieved that pressure a little bit, that's no longer the case.
That's what I was going to say, we are, what is doing?
Trump, he put their own building up, so they had their, and then I want, one thing Mark did not cover, that I think is important for you guys to think about, is MS4 and IED requires that you have a captive salt area, that you don't have runoff going away from that salt into your environment. We, that building we have right now does not meet those requirements.
Not really a building.
We've skated through it for a lot of years. If you don't do this, one of these days, that's going to come back to haunt us too.
So is there, we've already explored this, but is there a way, Michigan is so small, we're so small, Dunland's so small, Sherwood, like, is there a way that we can store all this, that they pay us as well, or is it?
Great question. So we already supply to the town of Michigan shores, we sell them salt already, and we store salt for them. We used to for the town of Trail Creek. The town of Trail Creek had a contractor come in and build them a 200, I think it was just shy of 200 ton facility, that they now store their own salt as well. If there was ever a banner that we were run out, what municipalities do is we can lean to Port County, Michigan City, and then typically what we would do is tell them, we need 50 ton of salt, and then when we could get it in order, or find, like John said, find somebody to sell us salt, we would then repay the municipality that we borrowed the salt from. So we do sell to the town of Michigan shores currently, that is the only other one. Dunland uses a private vendor that comes in and does all of their work. But again, to John's point, he is correct, that is one of the other things on the new building that we would have, is that we would have some sort of door system across the front of the facility, and then I'd also ask Tom to make sure that once we get the scope of work on the construction of the building, that we reach out to IED to make sure that all the way to construct is within their guidelines, so that we're constructing the facility that meets the needs by them, so that when our next inspection comes, they're not surprised at the construction of the new building, so.
Definitely open for discussion. Just looking back, I know that, I just heard tonight, Meg, Kendra asking about funding for DNR control, and it's, well, we think we can, we're not sure, we have to look around, because we have sewer, we have septic, we have a lot of things on the table, we approved the truck in May for 140K. I just would ask Meg and Trista to look at this a little closer, to see how loose 100K to come up with is.
I think, Meg, well, Meg, you probably touched on this, but the general operating budget under the motor vehicle fund for this year in the operating budget, I believe we had like 20 or 25,000, Meg, in one of the accounts we haven't touched yet this year, and we have another building and facilities account. So when Trista and Meg looked at it, there were funds that can be taken on the general operating budget for this year. And then we looked at, during budget and finance committee, we had a discussion, for example, the community center originally was scheduled for 140,000 in capital improvements this year. We reduced it from 140,000 to 70,000. That 70,000 now, year to date, you approved, I believe, right around 17,000 for heat pump, another 81,000 tonight for the masonry work.
Margaret.
I'm sorry.
You said 81,000.
So in total, for the community center this year, we spent about 25,000 in capital improvements. We do not see them utilizing their 70,000 in budgeted capital for this year. So one of those discussions we had budget and finance was... So one of those discussions we had Budget and Finance was, we would tell the community center, you know, no more capital projects this year, other than possibly our bathroom, I think, would be okay. And then we can pull some money from various funds to make this, you know, ninety to a hundred thousand dollar project a reality. The thing is, is like we explained with Budget and Finance, this project kind of moves to the forefront over other projects being a priority because in the long run, particularly starting January 1st of 2025, this project will start saving the town monthly storage fees that could be thousands of dollars a month. So if we can save you five, 10,000 in storage fees, that's 10% of this project that we're going to save by not having to pay cargo to store our salt for us. Because if November, December, if this November, December, we're not allowing or laying down a lot of salt, we're going to be paying a lot of money to store the salt at the end.
So understanding that and seeing these photos, it's not recently aged, it's definitely over time. Was this part of the capital plan? Was this already in it from 2023?
Yes, it was discussed in the past, but just no action taken. I think with these more mild winters, it's just become a pressing... And Mark is correct that there are a few places, he actually spoke about it in email recently, where to pull most of this from. So MVH and Wilk Road and Street, I'd say 80 or 90 of it is pretty accounted for.
And one of the things that brought into kind of the forefront of discussion is when Tom shared with me about 30, 45 days ago about the amount of storage, you know, that we're going to have to pay for and what that was going to cost us. That was a learning experience for me because I didn't know what we're doing that previously. Tom kind of educated me on that and said, no, we've had to do this several years when we've been in a bind because of mild winters. So that kind of prompted me to have a discussion with Tom and then in front of Budget and Finance and the Public Works team to say, look, we need to come up with an immediate solution so that we're not, you know, a year, two, three years down the road still dealing with these storage fees. Because eventually in a couple of years, we could have paid for a third or quarter of this building.
Can I add? I also need to be educated and talk to the town. I believe that any storage fees, we can budget for it in '25, but there's nothing this year to budget. Any of the salt budget is to purchase the salt. So keep that in mind too.
And the community center funding, that's, I think we talked about 35,000 dollars for bathroom. And they were told at the Budget and Finance meeting that, you know, it doesn't mean that they will stop getting estimates for that. They still will, but chances are extremely high that it would not be a project that would be done and/or approved this year. It's a pretty extensive project to turn one of the bathrooms into a...
Although the bathroom does fall... I think the community center budget started at 140,000, so...
Well, they went down to 70.
Right. But community center is not even on track, even with the bathroom.
Correct.
They're not at all. That still left us that other 70 towards toilets.
And again, great discussion tonight. I welcome additional questions. And I just wanted to come to a future council meeting and present you with quotes from the concrete and the construction of the building without starting this conversation tonight to allow all of you some time to kind of, you know, absorb all of this information, ask more questions in the following weeks. And then the sooner I hit those quotes, I will share them with you in advance in the next meeting. And then again, Meg can continue her research with Trista, plugging these numbers in as we finalize the 2025 budget, this middle and that, so it's no surprise that you're ready.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Republic Services contract extension proposal for 2025 for approval.
So I'll just start with some information for all of you. That... I have a date here. Last week, I shared the contract extension with you. In the contract extension, I also shared some comparisons to the Town of Trail Creek, what they are currently paying, some of their experience when they have changed various vendors for their service contracts. One of the things, as you discussed this tonight and consider, oh, I would ask that we also consider many or drafted in ordinance as to what we charge our residents for the annual trash collection. Many communities around us, and we have done this in the past, are charging above what is charged to us by Republic Services just because we also have administrative costs in-house, sending out the public bills, handling complaints and other things that we do in our office. So as you look at the contract extension for the next three years, keep in mind currently, we are charging the residents 16 dollars and 59 cents per month. And the contract extension in front of you tonight for year one, 2025, is for 15 dollars and 27 cents. So we're still under the need for that. But as you go into years two and three, obviously we exceed that. So we need that some consideration and possible discussion with the town attorney on how to approach that topic, so.
Is the motion appropriate? Make a motion to pass the contract extension proposal?
I have some questions first, maybe for Chris or Mark. Do we have any leverage here? I mean, can we say... Is there anyone else that's going to get the trash? Because the board situation with recycling didn't resolve itself, but getting a situation with another. Does that mean, do any towns ever, like, accept year one increase and year two, but will flat for year three? Like, I feel like I should, salesperson at heart, not just accept this increase because I wish sales was that easy. That's what I would just say to all my customers. Like, can we go back and just say, what about hold year three flat at year two?
Mark, is it accurate that I don't think Dan eventually... I think we've been out to bid since 2011 maybe? And if we did, could we ask for a bid for those seven years instead of just one year? Because clearly someone might come in lower. These are just my thoughts. I think Republic has increased us either in a while, but same, I don't know where to stand with other places either. Clearly, they have exceptional service for our soil, so, you know, that's on council to decide what route to go, but I don't know how much research we want to do. Chris?
Well, I love that much better than your decision maker is also, and of course, you can negotiate. Do you have leverage? I don't know. You should read the reviews of comparing Republic to others. You should talk to the Town of Trail Creek who have been under contract with a couple of seniors that are very interested in providing proposals. And it doesn't hurt. There's... What's being presented to you is what's been presented to town administrator. So yeah, there's a little bit of a catch 22 is you can get a better deal, you also get sometimes what you pay for. So ultimately, yeah, you have the ability to take that out there and ask for other proposals. You can bid it, you can put it off the marketplace, but you get what you pay for on some of that too. So part of it, I think that, and again, I'm not advocating for Republic, but I think that some of the feedback in my experience with other towns has been pretty straightforward and marked up the difference in quality of service, etc.
The council, did you decide if we're not required to accept, they can still go with Republic?
Sure. That's assuming Republic still wants to go with the current numbers because if you take it out there, and yeah, and again, it's the marketplace. I can't speak to that and I've been a salesperson, but they don't have to honor this either.
Well, that's... Yeah, and Chief, I'd ask again about cancellation clauses. So we lock in for three years, but in year two, they reduce to two trucks, they have a whole new staff, they can't fix their problems.
Performance, do we get out?
Yeah, is there a performance clause for cancellation?
I don't know what that current contract says. We'd have to look at that.
So that would just be something that, you know, I understand costs go up, so I have no problem because it is the devil we know and they have been excellent. So I'm not concerned about cost increases. I do think, you know, we as taxpayers should also absorb some of that cost increase over time, like with everything else.
I think that's a great question. I have to go back to the original contract. I'm sure those items are covered in there. To Kendra's point, I have negotiated with Jim Metros, who is our municipal manager for our account. Jim and I have had a handful of conversations and emails and we personally met about 10 days ago. Prior to starting the negotiations with Republic, I had shared with Jim that I had asked for a flat rate in year one and then to see what they would propose for years two and three. Jim assured me that what he's offering us is less than what they have offered to other communities. Obviously, he couldn't share, you know, some of the intricate details and that, but as a long-term customer with Republic Services, his directive, you know, works to me, we're do not want to do you as an exceptional client. They have an exceptional to work with. I think when he explained to me, just as we are faced with our town employees when they are getting annual salary increases, the cost of fuel, cost of repairs for trucks, tires, they just took on their first electric trash collection vehicle where they're trying to go green. They're trying one in the state of Illinois. They are, I guess, maybe they're number one or number two in the nation as far as a trash collection service. It's either them or waste management, and it's either one or the other. They're the top two. So I negotiated the best I could with them to give us the prices that we have today. I think if it wasn't for asking for them to give us some consideration as a long-term client, then we probably would have seen a 6% to an 8% increase on a lot of these. I know the Town of Michigan Shores last year, they just reviewed their extension for like three years over there as well. I can't remember the percentage of increases. But when I look at current market data that's out there now, you know, the 2% and the 4%, 4%, I think were pretty fair when you look at the cost of overall product and goods and services.
Can we approve for 2025 by itself or will our prices for 2026, 2027 drastically change if we don't lock in for three years?
Yeah, they'd have to give a different... This is their proposal for four years. Is time going to be essence for settling for this?
No, we have time. I mean, we can go back and ask Tom if you want to amend it from a three-year to, you know, another term. We may find that, you know, one year, he may give us 4% for year one and then, you know, who knows after that. They're offering us a three-year at a reduced rate.
Kendra's question, confirm the cancellation so that you have the entire contract so that you can add in addition to the extension.
And our only other option is waste management?
No, there's two other vendors that have reached out to the town hall, to the clerk's office, asking to provide quotes in order to, we would open this up for bid. I can assure you that both of those vendors that reached out told us that we'll obviously be under what we're currently paying Republic because it's a matter of public record, they know what we're already paying for trash collection each month. So year one, they're definitely going to come in lower. Then you're stuck at diversity of having any vendor. You don't know when you're going to be charged years two or forward, so. Again, we got time on this. I was asked to get the contract prepared because we're getting ready to draft the 2025 budget. So therefore, the clerk's office wanted a budgetary number and therefore I thought for, you know, at least the next three years when it comes to trash collection services, we knew what to budget for this particular line item because we have a three-year extension before us. So again, at your pleasure, I can follow up any additional questions to them or whatever you would like.
I have no problem with it. I just have... It wouldn't be nice to know about the performance clause, even though they have an excellent performance, but we should ask. But I mean, I don't... It is reasonable. I just don't know how these things work with, you know, like, I'm getting a job with cargo and I'm going to start a new job with...
Oh, this is great. Take loss.
I mean, just send your increase and you're done.
In my six months of working, I'm running it now, but we did a quick audit and the number that we pull out of our system for homes being picked up was a little bit less than what Republic was charging us for. Republic is, I think probably was through doing their own count, their driver has gone to... They're doing their own audit to help us and kind of see where we're both at. We think it could have to do with the beach stops if they just now stopped charging us for that. So I think probably credit would be given to us once that's all finished. They also credited us, their office person inadvertently increased our cost that was in the contract with, in one line, with the line below it said, yet we're going to keep you at your current cost for another year. So I think for six months, they credited us for, it was about 400 to 500 dollars. Just more... They're nice to work with and I advocate them and just giving you the information based on my experience in the clerk's office.
Would you make a correction? The last time I negotiated with them on a contract extension, I was able to give a flat, no increase at year one. So I kind of figured this would go around that, you know, I wasn't going to be able to accomplish that again, so I thought 2% is, you know, greater than year one. To Meg's point, the household account, Meg, I've had a chance to share this with you. Jamie Westman reached out to me today by telephone and did tell me, I should see an email later this week, that what we bill and what we were getting billed from Republic, they're now wanting to use our numbers so they will match and those corrections will be made. So that will be a benefit to us as well. So there's just a handful of households we're not even going to argue. We're just going to make sure that our buildings match theirs and so that, you know, we have the correct invoicing each month.
I think we just thought the issue through the board and when they took over the recycling, just the amount of time and phone calls and emails to resolve a small problem. I would just renew my motion to accept the contract extension proposal.
I'll second that because I would just say, I mean, Republic has really given us great service, great customer service. And Long Beach is tough. I mean, our roads are hard to get around in. You know, two cars can't even fit down our road, but they get down and they get our stuff. So I would second that motion. Anything more discussion?
Yeah, I still would like to know if we have a performance cancellation clause in the contract. I'd imagine if we've been doing three-year blocks, there's likely, but to lock in for three years with a price increase year after year without knowing that if they fail to deliver the same level of, you know, service, that we should have the ability to then cancel this three-year.
I will find the original contract tomorrow and send it out to council if...
Okay, that sounds good. So I think that...
We would make a motion to approve with, after review of the contract so that after...
Yeah, I would like to...
Yeah, motion group after we all...
I'd just say, let's table it till next month. Keep it open and let us see the contract first and then...
Yeah, as long as we use that as numbers for budgeting is the most important because we know what this would be, you know, if we went with somebody else, more than likely less for next year. So, you know, you can table this till next month. It's not going to hurt our process.
Okay, we will do that. Table till next month.
Republic doesn't put any pressure on her.
So this is our audio motion.
Anita?
Or draw your second and there is a one or you want to slice it.
Anita, you want to withdraw your motion?
I withdraw my motion at this time.
Thank you. Block party Ardmore and Elbridge Way on Saturday, August 31st, 2024, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Typically, when I have... Typically, we're going to have these in advance in the council meeting. I'd just like to share these, get them on the agenda for matter of public record, to let the residents know. This was shared with us by Mr. Mary McDonald. They're going to do the block party, more or less meet and greet for the neighbors. I have reviewed the request for Saturday, August 31st, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. We're requiring this couple of barricades to be dropped off. They will notify the affected neighbors. I recommend that council approve every request.
I make a motion to approve the request for the block party. I think it's a great idea.
I second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Last on our list is the letter to the Coast Guard that I sent out to everybody. I have one change that Dave gave me. The distress, sailboat in distress was not a mile offshore, it was a half mile offshore. So I have made that change. Did everybody get a chance to read it?
Yes.
Is everyone okay with it?
Yep, yes.
I would make a motion, then, that we get Meg to put this on our town letterhead and send it to the Coast Guard.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. I sent you, Meg, today, the corrected one.
Yes, I got it. Thank you.
Are there any council comments? Hearing none, claims approval.
Town checks, numbers 20891 to 2095, total 132,778 cents. Water checks, number 5507, 55075, total 138,750, 44 cents. July payroll, 9,202,10,47. Now make the motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve those checks in the July payroll.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. You too.